A catalyst will change with the chance to thrive. Crystal is the one to stir up gifts and save lives. You get exposure, promotion, and marketing too. And advertise for business owners just like you on Storytime. Your interview is global, virtual or in person, just come on the show. Yo, your story matters. Crystal will open the door. Forty years of experience, ready to give you more on Storytime. Get ready for Storytime. Hey, come on.
Good evening. How y'all doing today? I am so excited to be here yet again with Storytime. It is Wednesday, February 19th. And today I'm coming to you not just for Storytime, but I'm coming to you with some HBCU love. And we're gonna have a conversation with some people who also have some HBCU love. And we're talking about our beloved, you know, over there on 1315 Oakwood Avenue, St. Augustine's University, you know? And we just want to have a conversation. We just want to have a conversation. And I know there's some people that's gonna pop in. So I see a couple of Falcons out there. So let me see who we got out there right now. I see Larry Phillips chiming in from the West Coast. Hey Larry, how you doing?
It's a beautiful thing. Thank you for the invitation.
Yes, 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 man, man, man. You graduated from St. Aug when?
1975.
Wow, wow. I see a young man that has been so instrumental in trying to keep us to keep informed and keep the legacy alive. I see Devron out there. Where you at, Dev?
Hello, hello, North Carolina. How you doing?
North Carolina, and you graduated when?
Ninety-six, but I couldn't walk into ninety-seven.
Ninety-six and ninety-seven. Then I see another young man, played Falcon basketball, and he had a dad that worked at the school. And we know him, that's Mr. Benjamin Johnson. Are you there, sir?
Yes, I am, Crystal. Thank you for having me, and I'm in Raleigh, North Carolina.
Okay, and you graduated around the time I did. What year you graduated?
I'm a year after you. I graduated in eighty-three.
Eighty-three. Listen, I want to welcome all three of you guys. I want to welcome all of you to the stage. And it's exciting to have you all here. And let's have a conversation about St. Aug. So let's sit down like we sitting in a living room. So we're gonna have a conversation with Larry, Dev, and Benjamin, and any of those others who pop in, because there's a few others who said they would pop in. And if some people come in, and some of them may be watching, I see Rochelle said HBC love, you know, HBCU love, yes. So this, you know, guys, we know right now, it's a painful time for us. And I just had the idea, I was talking to a Falcon, and we was like, man, let's just have a way that we can just have a conversation, you know, to spread the love and to keep the love. And I do have an update. I got a call today from a Falcon, Warren Brown, because about the podcast that y'all did. When was the podcast I did with you all? And I did the team, Ben, how long ago was that? A couple of weeks ago?
That's about two, three weeks ago, yeah.
The podcast from a couple of weeks ago, they were inspired. And Warren called me today and said they are going to get together. The whole team is gonna get together in May at his house. And he called me to thank me and said, Crystal, you know what? You inspired that because you got us all together. And now they're all coming to my house in May, and we're all getting together. Everybody that is alive that played on that team is gonna be at his house. I said, that is beautiful. Don't you think that's beautiful? And what I love about it is it's keeping the connections. Y'all, I know Larry, you out there in California, you have made some strong bonds. Devron, I know you've made some. We've all met some good people. And even with everything going on on the campus, I would like to see us all still stay connected and still, you know, have that love for one another and keep the relationship going. What's your take on that, Dev?
Yeah, I think it's important. You know, Falcons United in particular, we've been trying to push as much pride as possible, as well as deal with the day-to-day issues that we face. And it's a juggling act. A lot of Falcons need a boost. So I hope any Falcon, I hope you know you on that love. And just know that, you know, all of us right now are trying to prepare for something greater. But at the same time, you know, we're dealing with a transitional period in our legacy. And it's one of those things where when you talk to Rams, or you talk to Aggies, or you talk to whoever, you know, Eagles, they have the same concerns that we do. Because ultimately, I think the vulnerability of HBCUs is being shown in real time through what we're going through. But I believe we're gonna be all right. I'm prayerful, I'm prayerful, but also believe we gotta do the work. And just like you said a second ago, we gotta come together. We have to come together.
Yeah. There is definitely, HBCU pride is strong. There's so many HBCUs out there. Larry, you out there all the way in the West Coast. Have you met some people out there that you felt the HBC connection even out there?
Oh, absolutely. They had, I think last weekend, they had out at SoFi, the HBCU bands from different universities that performed in Inglewood. So there's a strong consciousness out here in Southern California for the HBCU school, even though we don't really have, you know, the same type of situation that you have there on the East Coast. But St. Augustine is well-known out here on the West Side.
Yeah, because y'all had, y'all have talked to us about that. What do y'all have out there in place out there in California that may be able to be useful when we begin to start thriving again? And I'm gonna say that we will thrive in 2025. I'm gonna speak that in the atmosphere.
Well, one thing, we gotta start with the church. We got the Episcopal Church, okay? That's one thing we have. I mean, when Dr. Robertson came out here, that was the connection. He came from campus to the Episcopal Church. And the Episcopal Church brought us all together. And at that point, we found out that there were tons, well, not tons, but there were quite a few. I think at one point, we had maybe twenty-five throughout the state. You know, and we were functioning, functioning well. But then, I guess Dr. Robertson retired. Isn't that what happened? He retired. And then there was a new president that came in. What was the name, Dr. Franklin? He came out here, spoke to the group, took him out to dinner. And then after Franklin, you know, there was another president, or woman, I think. She never came to the West Side. She never came. So we just kind of lost the connection with the administration, with the alumni here in California. But we're still here.
Okay, that's good. And Ben, where you was? Because you weren't always in Raleigh, right?
Right.
Your association with the school and what you know is available to help us in this day and time?
Well, I was out in Arizona and a member of the greatest fraternity in the world, Omega Psi Phi. And we had a, we had a, in the Phi Ota chapter, and we were familiar with Ta Ta Chapter out in Los Angeles. And they have an HBCU expo out in Los Angeles. And we would make that pilgrimage over there. And there was, we had a St. Aug chapter of, there was about, there was seven of us in Phoenix. And we did what we could do. And then we would go over to Los Angeles because they had numbers. And we would participate in that. And so we always, and then through our, we had what is called an Omega Youth Leadership Academy, and where we would get together in Phoenix. And we talked about the HBCUs, where you could go. And then became basically a spokesperson. We had a couple of, I don't know if you remember, the tennis pro at St. Aug. I can't think of his name right now. But he came out and representing the university and spoke to the students that we had. And so we had about five in my twenty years in Arizona to attend St. Aug. So, you know, we did what we could. And then, of course, you know, my story and my family's story with St. Aug was, you know, I would always lay that down. But that was one of the biggest things that we had, especially out West and dealing with that.
Wow. So before I go to Dev, anybody just coming through, we talking about HBCU love. Let me give you an idea of what that means. These are all some of the schools that are part of the HBCU culture. You know, what does HBCU stand for? Historically Black Colleges and Universities? And you see a lot of different logos here, and it's a different kind of vibe. And we're just proud of the HBCUs, you know? So we wanted you to see that and know that we are just proud of the HBCUs. Devron, you're part of the new school. And so right now, talk to me about St. Augustine's and what it means to you.
St. Augustine's for me, just depends on what time of the day it is. When I wake up, you know, I'm always inspired. My son, you know, he was a Falcon. My cousin was a Falcon. Two of my brothers were Falcons. When I think about St. Augustine's, just in its raw state, I think about people like myself. I didn't have good grades. I was not, I just was not that guy. I was smart, but just made other decisions. Had a ton of basketball scholarship offers and stuff. But I really didn't, I didn't apply myself academically. But I tell people all the time, two things that St. Aug did for me. One, it taught me how to be a student, how to matriculate. But the other thing it did, it gave me a ton of lifelong friends. And some of the fight that you see in me and some of my generation is, we value each other, but we value our legacy. Because the legacy gave us that piece of sacred land. And it means a lot to me. St. Aug means, I mean, you know, we used to joke like, who was more Falcon ten years ago? You know, I'm more of a Falcon. I'm more, you know, and you would throw out all of the things that you might have experienced. But the one thing that I've realized in more recent times is, anyone who loves the university, we're just equally Falcon. If you loving on the university, you're taking care of the university. We're just equally Falcon, you know? So means a lot to me.
Wow. Now Larry, you have something a little bit more than we do in regards to a connection. There's that St. Agnes Hospital. Was you born in St. Agnes? And your mom, your dad, and everybody, everybody was born there, right?
Born there in nineteen fifty-three, yes.
So, so talk to me about that. Talk to me about your feeling about the hospital being on the campus and the possibilities of anything happening with St. Agnes.
Well, St. Agnes is a very special place for me, you know? I remember in nineteen sixty, when we went to pick up my sister there at the hospital. And I was in the car. At that time, I think I was seven years old, six or seven years old. And my dad got in the car with the baby. My parents got in the car with the baby. And I remember leaning over the seat saying like, what and who is that? Well, that's, that's, that's. So I, you know, every time I'm in Raleigh, you know, I always try to go through campus. And when I drive down with, I think, Oakwood Avenue, and I stop and I look over there, I can't believe that sight, to see that gutted building. Is that the beginning? Is that the beginning and the end? Or is that gonna be the new beginning?
That's a good question.
Yeah, I mean, I'm prayerful for that. That at the end of the day, I mean, that can be the start. That can be the new beginning right there.
And you know what? I think that's a fair question that a lot of Falcons probably have in their mind. Would y'all say that? I mean, and I think that's all we want, is to really understand what the expectation should be. Because I think it's the, it's not knowing that really gets to some of us. And like you said, Larry, living here, Raleigh, I don't know, Ben could say this too, but living here, the thought of going to 1315 Oakwood Avenue or passing through there and it being something different, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a little bit awkward, you know what I mean? So as you guys-
It's gonna be a lot awkward.
Time of the challenge is what it's gonna be.
Yeah.
So what do y'all think? What do you think you would say to any Falcons who go back and look at this, man? To, so they don't lose hope? If there's something we can do as Falcons to continue to rally, to continue to believe, besides having faith, if there's something we can do? I mean, let me ask you that. What can we do?
Well, Larry, I'm just gonna say this. I'm gonna steal what you just said, and that the St. Agnes building will be a beginning. Because the medical community of Raleigh, with all of the, I mean, we need to have clinics, we need to have those things. The Southeast Raleigh, babies were born there. This is where, you know, Jack Johnson ended up being in that hospital. It's got its own history. And especially with the DEI situation that we are occurring right now, St. Aug is needed more now than ever. And it, you know, and why St. Aug was started is basically what we're experiencing now. You know, it was freed slaves that didn't know how to function in this environment. And now we've got, you know, there's DEI piece, and they're putting them out. And we need to be the landing place for those that are put out to show them how to get into that, how to function in that workforce.
Wow.
I noticed that building is a historical site, correct?
Right.
Yeah, there are a couple, there are a couple buildings on the property that also have that same status?
Yeah, the chapel, St. Agnes. And Devron, is there one more? I think the Delaney Building.
They said there was like eight buildings. So I don't really know all of them.
Really? They have historical value to the point where it can't be touched?
Yeah, well, that's what Dr. McPhail said in the town hall meeting. It was something like that. If I'm mistaken, it's up or down one or two, but we have quite a few buildings.
That's a start right there.
Yeah, that's encouraging, because if they can't touch it, it's just a matter of somebody just staying on top of that. So with everything that's happening right now.
And Crystal, when you say, what do you mean when you say that? What do you mean when you say that?
I mean, the city, the state. I mean, if they're historical, they can't tear them down. That's what, am I correct in saying they can't tear them down, y'all?
You are, go ahead, Benjamin, and I'll definitely follow up.
No, go ahead, Devron, because I know what you're gonna say.
Well, you know what? I'm gonna yield to your wisdom. You go on, and I'll follow up.
When I say, when they stay there, when she stays there.
Yeah, we've got issues with the Board of Trustees, and then they're trying to sell the land and that. And those factors that you brought up, Larry, all play a part in why the AG denied the sale of the properties and the land. And they're trying to restructure the deal. And we're looking at, you know, what we need to do. But the AG is on it, so I will just leave it right there. I don't want to get deep into that. But I'll turn it over to Devron from there.
Well, I was also gonna, and those are definitely well-good points that need to be out there. But something else that we need to pay attention to is, they're neglecting the buildings right now. And in the process of neglecting the buildings, Shaw U's going through the exact same thing. So God forbid, if something happens to one of the buildings, then at that point, it's sort of up in the air. So, you know, a lot of the Shore Bears that we were working with a few years ago, when they had Save Shaw, that's one of the things that they were pushing, was like, we need these buildings to be protected. And it's not just like the water and the mold. They're just saying, sometimes they let the buildings get to a point where, we pray this doesn't happen, but if a fire just all of a sudden happened, it just disappears. And there's just a lot of neglect right now, whether it's financial, if we're gonna be optimistic, which is not, you know, I'm not gonna lie to the audience, but that would be what the board would say, you know, we just don't have the money. Plenty of Falcons are volunteering consistently to go over there and do anything that they need. And, you know, if I could just throw this in as a quick caveat, we are about to plan to go back over there, like we done since everything happened. And we are planning to come back over there and do everything that we can to take care of our campus. So St. Aug already knows it, and they keep saying, you know, they've been stopping people from going on the campus and stuff like that. But I do want to say that our group in particular, we will bring our own insurance to come back and clean up the university. So I just want to put that on the record officially on this show. So once we do decide to go back, whoever decides to come, just know that we will have the event, it will be insured.
Let me ask a question. Is the school closed right now? Like, what is the status of the school? Is the campus closed? Is the school closed? Are there students? I mean, what is that? What's going on with that?
No, it's open.
Oh, okay, that is, woo.
Yeah, but it's open, but the big game that's being played is, it's still sort of like someone has their hands and they're squeezing the juice. They're just squeezing the juice up out of the fruit. And ultimately, you know, the way we sort of look at it, and I'm not speaking for all of the organizations I'm a part of, but I'm speaking for Falcons United in particular. We're looking at it sort of like someone has their hands around the throat of our university, and they basically are trying to shove their head underwater as they squeeze the life out. But when we're having calls, or if we're on a forum like this, and we're saying, hey Falcons, we need your help, a lot of times, we're just trying to get some of that pressure relieved and just trying to make sure that the head stays above water so we can come back and fully restore our university back to its prominence.
Wow, so you were gonna add to that, Benjamin?
Yeah, and I'm just gonna, I do have an opinion, but I'm just gonna speak factually. I tried to get on the campus last Friday, and I was denied access. So they said that the campus was closed, you couldn't come on the campus. I'm also, that was a little disheartening. And then also to see the condition that the campus was in. There are a lot of, a lot of things that are going on behind the scenes. And, you know, as we, you know, as we mentioned about, you know, the sale of the university, they want to sell all one hundred and two acres. And I probably, I won't say that I know more than I should, but I do know more than average. And I've shared that with other colleagues. And like, the first question that you asked was about what does St. Aug mean to you? And I didn't get a chance to answer, but I will say this. I grew up on that campus, and then we moved away, but my dad was still there. And so in growing up on that campus, being able to, and I'll give you something to chew on for a little bit, but the Blue and White, the song, The Blue and White?
Yes, yes.
I knew that before I knew The Star Spangled Banner.
Wow.
Okay, and so I learned The Star Spangled Banner when I went to school. But my livelihood and my legacy was rooted in the blue and white, the dark hue of the violet, and the snow whites' lilies bloom. That piece is with me forever. So one of the things in trying to take these next steps is that, you know, St. Aug has a purpose. And it was fitting for the people that came before me. And St. Aug gave me tools to work with. And I would be doing a disadvantage if I didn't use the tools that St. Aug gave me. And there would be some people that would be rolling over in their graves. It's like, you know, you know what to do? You got the tools, you need to do this. So I'm gonna stop preaching and get back here. But yeah, but that's where we are. There's a lot of things that are going on that we need to correct. But again, you know, we've got a, we've got a board that is not, that doesn't understand the legacy of St. Aug. And, but they understand their own perseverance.
Own agenda. Let me ask you, there are a lot of Falcons who are, in the know, there are a lot of Falcons who are in the dark, and some are perplexed about what's happening. Some are misled about what's happening. You know, it's a lot of people in a lot of categories, right? But my thing is, what can we do as Falcons? Like, those that want to do anything, is there anything that anyone can do during this phase of it all? Right now? Because is this a dormant phase where we just need to wait it out? Or what can Falcons do right now? That's my thing.
Please don't wait. The future is now.
And what do we do?
And what, what, what I, one of the first pieces that you can do is, you need to write to the Attorney General. You need to write to the North Carolina Black Caucus. And I can put those emails in the chat to let them know that you have a displeasure with what's going on with St. Aug, how we can, and I'll go, the reason why I'm saying this is because in the Saks report of everything that was going on wrong, what they discovered, Saks is not an enforcement agency. So they can only say, well, ten million dollars is unaccounted for. Well, in the judicial system, if you don't have, if you got ten million dollars and you can't account for it, the judicial system will say you gotta go to jail. And so the, right now, the judge and jury is the Attorney General and the politicians. And they have to put that from a legal perspective. And as we started this process, we didn't, our initial lawsuit was to just, we just asked the board to go. Because we know it's messed up, and we're gonna fix it. But we can't fix it as long as you're there. So our lawsuit was just, just go.
All right, so yes, write it in the private chat so we can put that across for people who want it. Write those things in private chat, Benjamin, please. I'll let you add on to that. But the interesting thing is, those who may not be involved in the suit, just Falcons, ordinary Falcons that are sitting by, you said, don't just sit there. You did make some suggestions. You said, right, you said, do some things. What else can we do? There are organizations, there are fraternities, there are sororities, there are social fellowships, there are former students that graduated, there are alumni. Like, what can we do also? How can we help during this process to make a difference, to tip the scale a little bit? Because there are people like Larry out in California who have people that are waiting and willing. And he also is a part of another organization. I didn't hear him say New Gamma, right? So what, you need to know what people need to do. Devron?
Yeah, there's a few things that Falcons can do in real time. Outside of the resolution that's still up there for the board to go. If you agree with Falcons United, the Board of Trustees needs to leave. You can go on Falcons, you can go on and you can pull up that resolution, you can sign it. Another thing that you can do is join Falcons United. You can literally join our Facebook page. It's only Falcons and friends of the university there. We've been there for fourteen years. And even before we were Falcons United, we were Dr. Godfrey for President. And we've done a ton of different things. You can also follow SaveSAU at savesau.org. And you can stay abreast there. Falcons United is planning a few things for the spring, and we're hopeful that other organizations are right there with us. Some of the things that we've done in the past, you know, even Crystal, your organization has come to numerous events and has been instrumental in helping other Falcons to know what may be going on. And we've done all kinds of things. We've already marched, SaveSAU marched, oh, excuse me, SaveSAU had the press conference, but a lot of SaveSAU members and Falcons United members, as well as people in your organization, we've marched. But now, you know, the university, it needs money. And there's a lot of confusion sometimes on where to donate money. And what I will say very specifically is, as far as Falcons United, we've taken donations to the Oakland Falcon Foundation, and we do a lot of direct impact donations. So in essence, we find something, we raise the money for it, and we close it. So, you know, when people, we've had people that were still giving money. We gave their money back because we're like, we're already done with that campaign in particular. So we are gonna have the campus cleaning. We also planned an All Falcons Come Home Weekend. And right now with that in particular, it's sort of in talks with various organizations, but we can't really speak on it until we get the actual date. And we're hopeful that all of the different organizations, and all of the Greeks, and all of the fraternities, and social organizations, civic organizations, anybody in the Raleigh Durham area, we want you all there with us. We don't, when we do- When we do this weekend, it's not only for the Falcons to come on back, because we got business to do, this is not homecoming. This will be us coming together in the spirit of the legacy, but with that being said. We're not gonna stop people from being festive, we want people to be festive, you know, so we're sort of working out the kinks there, because it, we. As a wounded Falcon, the one thing that we can do is we can give each other a hug. We can sit down for a few hours. And we can talk the business of the university. And then maybe we will all get something, you know, maybe we'll do something together. Y'all, you know, y'all gotta pardon me, I'm having some, uh, beautiful technical issues right now, which I normally don't have, but my laptop would not let my, um. It wouldn't let my camera cut on, so I, I didn't have enough time to go onto my other computer, but. There's a ton of things that we can do, um, another thing is right now there's students that need to graduate. Um, and last semester, Save SAU, on Falcons United in particular, um. There was others, um, re- regular alumni, we donated money in the course of a day, uh, we, we raised almost four thousand, well, three thousand dollars. To get a student across the camp, ac- across the stage. And I'm gonna shut up on this note, cause I could be long-winded, but I do wanna say this. There are a lot of students that went to St. Augustine's University that have graduated over the last two or three years. And, uh, and what I'm about to say, um, I'm saying it and y'all know me, I mean, well, if you don't know me. I say it and the, the school has never come after me for anything, cause I'm always telling the truth. And I'm gonna say this for the, for, for the truth seekers. Some of these students have bills and balances that don't technically belong to them. And so we have one or two things that we're gonna have to deal with in the next few months. Either we're gonna have to make a decision as the Falcon Nation to come on together. Raise the money and pay the university for something that we know is not right, it's not right, y'all. I'm just putting it out there, this is Deborah saying this, this has nothing to do with the show or anything like this, Deborah Benjamin said it. But we can either pay that money and then ask the university to sort of help us to understand the process. Or we can, as Falcons, we can start writing the university, just asking the questions. There's nothing wrong with using your voice. There's nothing ever wrong with using your voice. If you don't necessarily wanna come out there and march and, and sort of, when I say get in the weeds, that's fine. You can help us raise money, you'll know exactly where your money goes. If you donate to the legal fees, as far as Save SAU, it's needed, we, we, we need it, we need it. If you donate to Falcons United via the Oakland Falcon Foundation. We're, we're about to go over there, we're about to clean up our campus and we wanna take care of the students. And I'm a member of both organizations, but I can only speak right now, very, very, in particular about Falcons United. And then the things that I noticed Save SAU is gonna do, you'll see it on the calendar events as it comes.
Wow, so thank you for that input and Ben, if you put it up there, we'll definitely share it. So Larry, you're a part of an organization, when you hear things like this, I know sometimes people have thoughts about. What they can do, is your organization looking at ways that they wanna help at the New Gams? Are they looking at ways that they would like to? Come to the rescue or contribute in some kind of way?
Uh, yeah, the latest I heard is that the brothers definitely wanna be hands-on when it comes up to the, the cleanup, the campus. That, that's a, that's a big thing, uh. The last time I spoke with, uh, uh, Brother Rand, Brother Calvin Rand. Yeah, he mentioned that, as a matter of fact, there's a meeting tomorrow night and I'm gonna share this information with them. About the upcoming, I guess, date of the campus cleanup. And, uh, you know, that, that's something that I'm sure that the brothers will, and the sisters will be willing to, to do hands-on, to be there. Part, you know, partaking that. It's, it's hard for me to believe that we've come this far. And what is about to happen? But, um, you can count on the brothers from New Gamma Alpha, for sure, one hundred percent. No, no, all you gotta do is just give, say the word and they'll be there. Same thing, the Omega Sci-Fi, say, and the, and the, and the campus. You know, it, it's amazing to me that a lot of my friends that went to, like you said, Central, A and T. There are so many friends, you know, friends and family from Saint Aug, so many people. That were born right there in their family, right, on St. Augustine's campus. So, there, there's a, there's a lot of people that need to be tapped into, a, a market of people that need to be tapped into.
And then, and so that's what I'm saying, is that what can we do? You know, to help, because see, this is not an attack, you know, we didn't do this live today to want to attack. You know, we wanted to do this live, number one, to give people an opportunity to talk about why they love Saint Aug and why it's worth fighting for. And to remind everyone that even through all of this, to please keep. Getting with your Falcons and connecting with them and loving on them and encouraging them and not giving up. And finding out what can we do and finding out ways we can help if you don't understand what's happening. I wish there was multiple groups that were doing things and there was a place that we can all. Send the money and we know we have that with Falcons United and, um. The Oakwood Foundation and there may be others, I don't know. But with all of these things in place, if people just knew about them and they trusted it and they did it, if everybody could just come together on one accord. That, that's why the name Falcons United, I believe, was started, am I right, Deborah? For everybody to unite, there's no competition.
No, there's no competitions, no competitions, um. And if you look at the history of Falcons United, we were in the background for a very long time, nobody knew we were there. But we were going over there mentoring students, we, well, pardon me, we, we tried to go through the university to mentor students and it just. They would not, they just would not let alumni. They would not let alumni come, we even tried to donate money, we couldn't donate money to the school, so this is what happened. So when people look at Falcons United, it's, it's not a de facto organization. It's actually, um, a, a ton of Falcons that maybe don't necessarily have a home. But they're constantly empowered to use their voice, and when I say don't have a home, you know, some Falcons are not members of the National Alumni. But we've always encouraged individuals to join the National Alumni. You know, up until, up until about a year or so ago, we would constantly encourage people, um, to join the National Alumni. At this point, that's just, you know, I'm, I'm, I would love to hear from the National Alumni. So until I hear from the National Alumni, I can't, I can't encourage people right now to join the National Alumni, it's nothing personal. It's not a dig at them, because members in our organization are life members of the National Alumni. But nevertheless, I mean, there is no competition. We did name it Falcons United because in theory, we, our whole theory was, we're not all gonna get along, we know that. Alright, we, we have transgenerational communications, we also have different ideologies on how the school should work. But you know what? Let's all get around the school and let's be vanguards, get these people off of our necks. And anything that we gotta fight about, we gonna do it the Falcon way, we gonna go behind the union and we gonna talk about it, or we gonna play some spades or shout. And at the end of the day, we gonna hug each other and we gonna protect one another. And that's just, that's what happens with most families, you don't, you know, family business is family business. But unfortunately, we're being forced to show the world. Um, the ugly side of what happens, not just in HBCUs, I wanna put this on the record, this is not an HBCU thing. This is a corruption thing. And corruption is in PWIs just as much as HBCUs. And it, and we gotta say that because, you know, sometimes when I'm talking to people, they're going, you know, oh, the, these black schools. I'm like, black schools ain't doing nothing with what the white schools is doing, you can't get white collar crime without the, the, the actual title, white collar crime, you know what I mean? So let's remove race and we just know that in all good things, you might have some things that might be bad. And that's just, that's reality, that's life.
Let me ask y'all this question, go back to your college days. When you were on campus, those four years or five years, if any of you stayed an extra year. What is the most meaningful memory you have of your college years on campus? What is the most meaningful memory you have of your time? When you were attending St. Augustine's College back then, that's what the name was, St. Augustine's College. What, what stands out the most that'll make you, that'll make you laugh and smile? What is the thing that you always think about? Or, and then the second part of that question is too. Uh, who was the instructor that really left the most impactful, you know, um. Meaning on you, you know, who left the most impactful effect on you through your life? Start with you Larry.
I'm, I'm gonna say Coach, Coach Harvey Hartley. Coach Harvey Hartley, the basketball era, the basketball days. Uh, you know, there was no football team, of course, when I was there in the seventies. And, uh, but Co- Coach Hartley was, uh, he's someone very special in my life. He was, he was very instrumental in me coming to St. Augustine. Too, I was one of those ones that, uh, uh, my senior year, I didn't know which way I was going, I had no idea. To be honest with you, I was already in California at eighteen. And I got a letter from my parents saying, oh, guess what, uh, you've been accepted to St. Augustine, okay? The next day I was on the flight coming back. And the story be told is that, you know, I always said, my wife would tell you, once I finish school, I'm going back to Cali, and that's exactly what I did, you know?
But you playing basketball Larry?
No, no, not, not on the team, no.
So he just knew you?
Yeah, yeah, it was the fine guru, Coach Charlie raised us, come on.
Okay, okay, so, so what? What's something that he said to you that has stuck with you all your life?
Ooh, just to, uh, Coach Charlie and he used to tell, he, he used to tell, uh. His son, all of us, that, you know, stay out of trouble. Stay out, he's always appreciated, stay out of trouble and, uh, just be the best that you can be. You know, Harvey Junior was a good, very good friend of mine and yours too. Uh, Johnson, he, you grew up with Harvey Junior? And, 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 you know, that whole family, the, the Coach Har- Harvey and, uh, Harvey Hartley and also, uh. Uh, another coach over there, uh. What's his name? His name, it was Coach, uh. Pup was there, uh, Coach Curry, you guys know that name?
Yeah, Earl Curry, yes, yes, yes.
This is fifty, uh, fifty years ago, okay?
Coach Curry. I remember Coach Curry.
Those, those guys were staples, man, staples in the, in the community.
Yeah, I remember Coach Curry well, he was good, he was real good, so what's your most memorable? Uh, thought, when you think of Saint Aug, something that happened at Saint Aug, something you did at Saint Aug? What, what's the craziest memory you have during the four years you were there that really you remember to this day, like? Back and laugh about it?
Seeing Julian Bond on campus, that was very inspiring. Julian Bond came to St. Augustine and he spoke. Him on campus, that, that was, that was, uh, that was pretty amazing, and I think, did I see Shirley Chisholm on campus?
Shirley Chisholm was on campus, they, they had some. Famous black, I mean Jesse Jackson. I, I, I saw them sitting in the front row, being able to just touch their hand. Uh, it, it was, it was, it was an amazing piece, um. And, and I guess as Larry has brought up these, these people, because it was truly a village. It, it was a village. You, you know, Co- Coach Hartley, you would see him and I'm, I'm a, I'm a tyke. You know, Larry's a little older than me, but I knew who Larry was and I knew Coach Harley and. And Harvey Junior and, you know, they were showing me how to play basketball, I'm learning from my brothers and. Um, I'll just say this, Larry had the only full court basketball back up in the woods, in the trees and there.
Got, got served, but you too had a court.
Yeah, we, we, we had a court and it was like, you know, but you had full court.
Forget how I fixed you guys, y'all come burn my nets up and I went down on. And I got me some chain nets. Came up to the house, right, and they burned out my nets and talked about. But now the Whipper Williams, I know y'all never heard of Whipper Williams. Got me some chain nets, so.
Wow, yeah, and you know what? I just found out a young lady who I met on Instagram, that followed me on Instagram, she just put in here and I didn't know that Quan. Her stepdaughter graduated from Saint Aug, isn't that something now? Wow, we, I would have never knew that Quan, like, isn't that something, we, wow, that's amazing, we've been, uh, associating with each other. On Instagram for, you know, a little over a year or two and we never knew that too, now she happened to see this and she said, wow, my stepdaughter graduated from Saint Aug. Isn't that something, small world, so the craziest thing that happened to you on campus, I'm talking about. You know, somebody taking your girl or something, a party or something, like for me, the thing that, I'm gonna tell you what it was for me. For me, it was, um, it was the. The girl, and, uh, let me try to get it right, the girl that died on campus. With that, we didn't have a football.
And, and, and lay them on.
Yes, that's, that stands out for me, because they came to us. Uh, it was me, Debbie Devon, all of us, and there was still that store back there on, on the back street, we walked out there. And, uh, the, the other thing that stands out for me was the parties with Reggie Mack on, on the top of the union, you know, uh, and Taylor Hall. We partied in Taylor Hall, a lot of people don't realize that Reggie Mack was our DJ back then from nineteen seventy-eight, he was the same DJ, you know? But those things stand out in my mind, but I wanted to hear like, yeah, so Larry, you said you saw some people, but. What's a good memory for you, Deborah?
I'll yield to Ben, I was wondering what Ben was gonna say actually, but, um.
The, the craziest memory, um. Well, uh, uh, initially, I didn't, I didn't wanna go to, to, to Saint Aug. And I went to the Citadel, uh, down in South Carolina, I'm playing basketball and. Um, studying and, and Pup and Coach Hartley. I came home for the summer and they were like, are you having a good time down there? And I was like, you know, no, it's, it's. I'm working and doing this, they said, well, you know, you can always come home. And, um. And the next thing I knew, I was talking with Pup and Coach Hartley and I, I was there on campus and, uh. Because all of those folks I had known all my life and now, and, and they had been giving me direction, but now they were giving me guidance. And, um. I, I, I've got a lot of memories that, uh. You know, I, I, I will say, I know with, with Pup, I wanted to, um. He was the assistant coach on the basketball team with Coach Hartley. And, um, and I wanted to start and I was, you know, I was one of the. You know, the top eight players for Coach Hartley, but I wanted to start and. And I was, I was a little, you know, perturbed about that and, um. And, and Pup, you know, I, I wanted to come out there and get my, you know. And, um, and Pup, Pup told me, he said, look. You, you gotta know your role and, and star in your role. And he's like, you know, you're averaging nine points a game. And you're playing, you, you, you scoring all your points, making free throws at the end of the game. And they fouling you and you going down there and, and, and you helping us win and that's your role. And I was like, but I, I don't want this. And they were like, no, you know, the, the, the goal is about what the team does, not about what you do. And, and those were some, some lessons that I got, um. You know, with, with Pup and, you know, I don't know if you all know Johnny McLendon. He was, he was Coach Hartley's coach at North Carolina Central and he was the first black coach. In, uh, professional basketball.
And what was his name again?
Johnny McLendon.
Okay, yes, yeah, yeah.
And, uh, the, the gym over at, uh, the, the court and everything over at Central is named after him. And, uh, he used to come to our practices. And, uh, you know, and I'm like, you know, this is, you know, this is greatness, it's just, you know, and, and it was a black man. And it was like, you know, you getting to see this and it's right in front of you, you can shake his hand, you can talk to him. And he'd give you little nuggets of wisdom and, um. You know, and, and, and Coach Hartley's backcourt mate was Sam Jones, who played for the Boston Celtics. Yeah, and, you know, these guys would come to practice, I mean, it was. You know, it was an education in the classroom, he had an education on the court, then walking across the campus and all these things were like. You know, and that's part of my piece about, you know, you got tools, man, you got. You've been around all this stuff, you know what's supposed to happen and, uh. And, and I guess my one thing like, cause I, back then, if you transferred, you had to sit out a year, Crystal. And, um, and so I sat out a year. And, uh, I, I was playing in a murals as we talked on the other call. Um, and then there, there's a group of us still today who. When you have parents that work at the school, you are looked at a little different. You looked at a little different. You looked at a little different. And so for the first year, nobody knew who I was, I was just going to class, I was doing my thing, I was a regular. And then the next year, I'm, I'm there, I'm playing and everything and I would go, I was playing in an amusement, I was working out and, um, my dad, uh, one of the students said, you know what, you know, Dr. Johnson, I see you coming to the basketball games while you go to the basketball game. And he said, well, my son plays. And everybody wanted to find out who that was. Cause I was just a regular Joe until then. And then, oh my God. That just, and that was the thing is like, you know, at that point, I realized, you know, okay, I've got some things in place here, I need to do and I gotta perform, but, you know, Pup and, you know, like, Coach Curry, he was the, he was the, he was the MC.
Okay, oh, yeah, he did do that.
And, uh, and, and so one, one time when I got, I, I did start and he called me by my childhood nickname, which was Benji. And he said, Benji Johnson. And I, I started to run out and I ran over there to the coach, to the table, I said, Coach Curry, you can't call me there. Now, I'm in college.
Wow.
And, um, you know, and I think about that, I said, where else could I have done that? You know, I, o- only in St. Aug, those were moments for me. Yeah, only in St. Aug, so don't.
Remember when President Jimmy Carter campaigned, I didn't mean to cut you off, but somebody said, remember when Jimmy Carter? I wanna say this to y'all out there on YouTube, cause I see a person, I put the link out there on YouTube, if you wanna come on camera, just click the link and you can come on and join us on camera. If you wanna share something, if you have a St. Aug memory, a good memory, you know, cause we gotta keep the good memories stirring up. We have to stay encouraged and still stay in this and not give up. And that's the reason why we were doing this, to kinda keep us encouraged. So if you're on YouTube watching, I just put a link, look at the comment, click it and it'll bring you here where you can join us on camera, okay? So I did that. Deb, what's, what stands out in your mind? What's that thing that in the four years you were there that you, it makes you laugh, makes you feel good and you can remember that happened at St. Augustine's?
Well, if it's just laugh and feel good, I mean, I've got too many incredible memories, but the one thing that I pride myself on is being one of the students that protested in order to get the buses to take our students and Shaw U students to the Million Man March. I'm, I'm proud of myself for that and I'm proud of everybody that stood with us, all of the young men and young women, cause there was a lot of us. And we kept, uh, asking the university to, you know, help us get to the Million Man March. And they just kept turning a blind eye. So when they had the convocation, everybody standing, they had all the board members up on the stage. And when everybody sat, about fifteen or twenty of us stood and we walked out. And they said, what was that? You know, it, it never really happened before.
Right.
So then the board members and the prince, the president, who was, uh, it was Franklin at the, at the time, if I'm not mistaken, they said, well, why did y'all, why did y'all do that? We said, cause we're trying to get to the Million Man March and you're not, there was no emails back then, so you know, it was, um, what was it? We were writing letters and requisitions or whatever, I don't know what it was, but they said, well, you know, come and talk to us. And we went and we said, well, if it's not just for us, we wanna take Shaw too. And they, Shaw U, St. Aug, not Shaw, St. Aug rented the buses for us, for all of us to go, and I think we had three chartered buses. And we took, I don't know how many of us, it was a whole bunch, and so we prayed at the campus in front of the Union. And we were all scared, by the way. Everybody talks about the Million Man March as if there wasn't some like trepidation, there was some things that we were like, what are we going to, you know, what if we get there and, you know, this happens and that happens, not, not the march itself, but people that might antagonize that much melanin coming into one place at one time. And I, I'm gonna say this last part, you know, cause, you know, I was thinking when you said, I was like, I've got too many memories, but the one thing I wanna say is, when we got off that bus and somebody said, there's a picture of us that, that's like in like art galleries. And I've never seen it.
Wow.
We got off the bus and we were hearing Marvin Gaye, we heard Mercy, Mercy Me, and the sun was still coming up. But you could, the crowd was so large, you heard all these people and it was just, it was a little like surreal. We were trying to figure out how to like, I think we were all trying to figure out where the restrooms were, but we all put our jackets and stuff in this big pile and we all put our hands on each other's shoulders. And this is no lie, as we were walking, the crowd just parted. It was like, it, it was just weird. And then, you know, you saw the children walk and the crowd would part. And ultimately, because they saw the line of us, you know, sort of arm to arm, you know, arms length going, they said, somebody took these pictures and it's in galleries. So I, I don't know what, what that is. But I mean, that's one of my happiest moments and, and one that stands out because that was, it was, it was, it was a real moment in time, but even more importantly, I'm glad that we stood up for something, the same way I'm glad that we're standing up now as Falcons to save the legacy. But I also wanna say one other thing. I can't mention one person that inspired me at St. Aug. So I'm gonna quickly say these names that came to my brain a minute ago. Um, of course, Baba Kanban, Dr. Kanban. You know, Dr. Kanban and Pup were the first two people that my father, God bless his spirit and God bless Baba Kanban's spirit, that's who he introduced us to. And he said, look, when I'm not here, these are the people that are your father figures and, and then me and Baba Kanban got really close, I was his work studies student and others, uh, and things like that, Ms. Priggin, uh, Ms. Broadway. If I saw her right now, I'd just give her the biggest hug. Cause she took care of us, she took care of us. Every single cafeteria worker that worked in, in those calves, I, I adore them. Because we used to get those hold flags and they'd be like, you can't eat. They'd, they'd be like, come back in fifteen, twenty minutes, you know what I mean? And they would make sure that we were taken care of. So a lot of the spirit that you see, you know, th- that's the energy that, that's the nurturing energy that we gotta make sure the legacy is, is secured for, because you got a lot, you got a lot of black melanated people, I don't care if you call yourself black melanated, L. Bay, Moore, whatever, Christian, Muslim, we all need to be nurtured, St. Aug does did that. You know, and don't forget Dr. Godfrey and, and don't forget Mr. Jones, um,
You're right.
Also, I think about, uh, Mr. Rob, Alonzo Lunsford.
Yes.
And, yeah.
Yes. There's so many, you're right, we can't, it is hard to just name one.
There's too many for them.
You're right, you're right, I shouldn't have said that, that was my, what, but let me do that, thank you for mentioning Dr. Kanban. Tomorrow at twelve noon, tomorrow at twelve noon, Eastern, uh, we will have a Storytime. The Legacy Continues for Dr. Kanban, uh, we actually are going to have his family. And that is going to be taking place right here on Storytime, so we definitely want you to check that out, that's gonna be amazing. And it's, it's gonna be right here on Storytime at twelve o'clock tomorrow. It's a podcast and, uh, I'll be talking to his matriarch, Mrs. Dr. Kanban and, uh, the daughter and the son, so please tune in tomorrow, if you can't catch it live, make sure that you come back and do the replay, cause that's gonna be powerful, they, they, they're coming in from Ghana to do that, so they're coming in from Ghana to do that, so that's gonna be pretty powerful. All right, and, uh, we're excited about that, we wanted to honor them, you know, especially right now, it's, it's Black History Month and, uh, you know, so we wanted to definitely do that, so thank you Devon for saying that and mentioning his name. And yes, there are so many, uh, Ms., one that we lost a couple of years ago, I think it was one or two years ago, she was near and dear to me, that was Mrs. Wright. You know, Dr. Mast, one of my favorites now too, you know, there's so, so many, um, and, uh, they stood out, Dr. Watson, Donald Watson, cause I actually see, see for me, it's a triple. Because I worked over there, I went to school over there, I even made the basketball team over there, so I have a lot of memories and a lot of different ways I've associated with my little crew that we created over there, so it's a lot of different things, so St. Aug means a lot to me, but guys, I, I'm just, I, I wanna ask you, is there anything that is on your heart that you wanna say to any Falcon that might be out there watching now? Come back and watch it later on the replay in regards to how they should feel right now, because we can't give up and, and if there's a word of encouragement that you have in your heart that you would say to any Falcon or to say to anybody else that says something about St. Aug, what, you know, what would that be? What would that be? And I'll start with you, Larry.
Let's just fight on, you guys, let's just, you know, keep it moving, keep, keep doing it. You know, that we not gonna accept failure. We need to continue to be together, stay positive, you know, um, and, and speak, and just speak the truth, you know, don't, don't sugarcoat it. Uh, and I was just thinking, there's just so much going on in society these days with this Doge, you know? We need to have Doge going on. St. Augustine Doge, we need some tech. You know, for real, you know, because someone does need to, to, uh, be held accountable, don't you all agree?
Yeah, yeah, most definitely.
Somebody now, you know, I, I, I don't really, I can't name anybody on the board, you know, but, uh, the board's got a bad reputation. You tell them I said something.
And you, and you're being kind.
From the West Coast, all the way from the West Coast.
Bad reputation.
Yeah, you, you being kind saying.
Yeah.
Very kind.
How many is it on the board?
We don't know.
Y'all don't know?
Well, by law, they're supposed to have fifteen.
Yeah, by law.
By law, they're supposed to have fifteen.
Y'all need to be expelled.
Yeah.
Whoever the hell you are, doctor, all of you.
Yeah, like, you know, if, if you had to,
They've done.
Yes, yes.
The job that they've done.
Yes.
You know, I mean, it, it's a shame. It's, it's a shame, man, they, they all, you know, and ain't nothing good coming your way, I'll tell you that right now. So.
That's right, if you're watching this, if they were watching this,
Yeah.
speaking to them, if they were watching this, cause that's what you were doing, like, if, if a board member turns to this and they get, Storytime is doing, doing something, they talking.
Can I, can I, can I answer that?
Yeah, go, all right, Devon, she teed it up for you, you got to hit this one out the book.
Well, I'm doing it so you can speak, speak next, you gotta hit it out the park, you know? If I hit it out the park, they might cancel the show, they'd be like, no more, they, they don't like him on there no more.
Don't get me canceled, Devon.
No, I mean, I won't, and, and you know, I love you, so you know, but, no, not at all.
Like, you're going low.
No, no, and, 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 and that's partially why I think, I, I wanna answer this question and I don't wanna be politically correct, I don't believe in that stuff.
Right.
We are in a fistfight for our survival.
Yes.
And it, it's literally, we are in a fistfight for our survival. For every Falcon who has sat on the sideline, we love you enough to say the house is on fire. If you, if you care, please, grab some water, make a phone call, bring a fan, I mean, and I'm, I'm saying this to say, there is no easy answer. But by you showing up, that is the answer. Too many times we in our minds thinking, well, what can I do? Well, how would you know if you don't show up to find out?
That's true.
Come on home. When we say all Falcons come home, it's not, it's literal.
Right.
Because what ends up happening is, if you're at work and let's just say your camera system, but we all old enough, well, we didn't have no alarm systems and stuff like that, well, your neighbors was your alarm system.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And if you came home right now and somebody was in your house and doing things they're not supposed to do, what would you do? Now add on to that, they lit a fire in your house, the place that you say you love. If you love it and you don't love me, let's just love on the school. Get home, go to the campus, see it for yourself. Go to savesau.org, definitely follow Ms. Bodie. Please, follow Crystal Bodie. You see Benjamin's name up there? Write his name down, call him, contact him, y'all know I'm an open book, y'all can contact me, you can email me, I'll talk to anybody. But you gotta come home, we cannot make any more excuses. We don't need anybody else to show us how bad St. Aug is doing. We tried to tell you. Benjamin Johnson tried to tell you. Ms. Bodie might not have said it in this way, but she tried to tell you. All of us that have been trying to say something, some of us have been, we've been, we've been shown, we've been shown a real bad door. And it does, and, and, and that's the part that hurts. It's not what the board members are doing, because they're corrupt. Yes, those people are corrupt. And the only reason I'm not gonna say no names is cause it's not my platform. If we was on my platform, I would call each one of them out. But you can definitely go on falconsunite.com. You can, if you're a Falcon or if you're a friend of the university, it, our group is hidden on Facebook, it's not for everybody and we don't let everybody in. We get hundreds of people to try to get in, we will not let them in. But if you are a Falcon or if you have ties to the university, come on in Falcons, unite with us, talk to us. We are not bad people, we are incredible people. And I'm telling you, as one of the founding members, we are incredible. We are nothing but Falcons that want our school to be protected. So we don't have to be here in this capacity, so the next time we come on here and we're talking to Ms. Bodie or Crystal Bodie and we're talking now, now we're talking about, guess what? We, we got the gym floor done, we got the new builders built, you know, we got new professors over there. You know, we got five hundred students, but we shooting for seven hundred, we gonna get that two thousand back, we gonna get thirty-five, that's the communication that we have to have.
Right.
All of this other stuff, you do not have time, your house is on fire. Look at the legal lawsuit, go through it, go and see what happened. It's public record.
Public record, that's right.
So you don't have to believe me, you don't have to believe us, and keep in mind what Benjamin said earlier. He said, we just asked them to leave. And here's what he didn't say, but I'm gonna add on this one part, cause he's like my big brother, yo, so I'm adding on this part as the little brother. A lot of the board members did leave.
Yeah.
They won't tell you that.
Yeah.
They won't tell you that.
Get out of there, didn't they?
They got out of there because ultimately, not everybody was bad, but not everybody is good. And in that hierarchy, they have lit the house on fire. It is spreading, but of course we can save it. You gotta believe that we can save it. You gotta look at everything that we have done, you have done, everybody's given money, everybody's helped get those students across the stage, everybody that's come over there to clean up, everybody that's fed the students, we fed the faculty and staff. We did it. Dr. Burgess has been thanking us, but then he don't want us to come on the campus. And that's not fair. That's not fair, let us continue to come and take care of our home, that is our home to take care of. All Falcons come home and yes, we can make it, do not think for one second that we can't make it. We can make it. And that's, that's, that's in a nutshell, fourteen years of love just thrown out here in the last two minutes. And everybody that loves this university, come on home.
Yes.
You're a friend of the university, come on home and help us.
Yes.
Please.
Yes, and if you're watching this on, if you just chimed in, this is about St. Augustine's University, this is a, a virtual call, you are welcome, there's a link on my YouTube channel, you can come up here, I see Pamela, you said, I suggest some of us take a course or two at St. Aug. Well, we, if we get the chance, and you said, what did you say? You said, remember the board, B O T, audit reported there weren't any wrongdoings, lies.
Oh, can I, can I speak to that?
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't see that. Matter of fact, I won't even speak to that, you wanna speak to that, Benjamin? So I don't mind speaking to that. Listen, no, can I just say this one thing?
Go, 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 go ahead, go ahead, Devon, cause you on the road, go ahead.
Y'all need to go back and take a look at who put that out there and said that it was, that didn't happen. Please, please go back and then take a look at where that was reported and see what it's anchored to. The miss, the amount of misinformation that that board has put out in the PR campaign is straight, straight out of a Trump, Trump playbook.
And that's, oh, yeah, that's good.
It's a lot of misinformation. And what they do is, they'll nuance one little thing and try to make you think it's the truth, case in point, and I'm gonna shut up. Here's the alley-oop to you, Benjamin. Four point one.
Right.
Now we got five point, whatever, we started with four, but how many we got now? Can you break this down for the people, Benjamin, please, so they can see what they said, it's that, that audit is not correct?
Because we just got the, the follow-up audit is the reason why we lost the accreditation. They've added, they've added four more items in there in addition to the original eleven that were in place.
Wow.
And one of this financial mismanagement, the ability to, uh, the, the, the fiduciary mismanagement and the financial mismanagement, they put those in two different categories, because the monies that came in were managed one way and the Because the monies that came in were managed one way and the monies that went out were managed another way. And then the recording of the finances on both av, areas were incorrect or mismanaged. So when, when the Department of Education doesn't allow you to do a drawdown because your students haven't received their Pell Grant or work-study money, red flag. Red flag. And so now St. Aug can't get any money from the Department of Education. And hopefully we still got a Department of Education within the next six months, but that's another story for another time.
It is.
But, but, but I was gonna say, Larry, I, one of the things that, that brought to mind as we deal with this board and what they have done to the institution. When your parents said, you got a letter at being accepted to St. Aug, and you were three thousand miles away, that letter meant something.
Absolutely.
And now when people say, where you go to college? And you say, St. Aug, their, their response is, what the hell is going on over there?
Wow.
And, and that has changed from you getting the letter, they calling you saying, here's your plane money, you need to get here.
Yeah, 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 yeah. No, let me say this real quick. Calvin, click the link and come on up. Click the link I put in the YouTube. Look at the link or look at your phone, because I couldn't do, that's Calvin McNeil. Click the link and come.
Okay.
Calvin has a lot of history too. He'd been there a long time too. Uh, anybody that's a Falcon, you're welcome. Just look at the link on the YouTube. Pup, okay, pup just joined. Pup, you may have to make sure your camera, the device is connected. Device is not connected. Coach Williams just joined us. So you might have to go back out, Coach Williams, and come back in. You may have to go back out and come back in, because it says your device is not connected. So do that, because we would love to have you join this call. So thank you, Coach, for coming. Go back out, come back in and try again. Go back out, come back in and try again, okay? Go back out and come back in and try again. Calvin, click the link. Yeah. So it's love. It's all love, man. It's the Falcons coming and expressing how important it is that we don't give up, that we don't give up, that we still rally together, that we still get with our, you know, crew, our organizations, and still put like minds together, come up with ways we can help. And then if we can, come together so we can do some things together. We don't have to do these things individually. We can collectively come together and do these together.
And, and as, as Devon said, you know, Falcons come home because we, we may not put you out front, we'll give you a broom, we'll give you a dustpan, anything, because we need all the help we can get.
We need everything.
Yeah.
Yeah, man.
And you can adopt your own part of the campus. So just whatever dorm, whatever part of the campus that you loved on, just make that your, make that your contribution. So if somebody's cutting grass over there and, and, and we raising money for that, and you, you're, you're in Missouri, you're on the other, you know, on, on, in California or whatever, you could say, you know what? Um, I, I was a part of Baker Hall, or I might have been in, in Gould Hall, or, and, and I want to take care of these parts of the campus. We will figure it out. Because you got a lot of people that will keep, keep coming over there. And we can do this. We, if we're not visible, we become invisible. What do I mean by that? There's million dollar homes around St. Augustine's University right now. And sometimes the comments that they're making in, in, uh, uh, in the news media is, it should be a park, put up some houses. And the, the utter disregard for our legas, legacy and the Seven Springs, because that was the original name of the land, the Seven Springs. It's an utter disregard for our legacy. So the reality is all of us that are on these calls, and I hope, I hope pup, Coach Williams pops. I hope he comes on the call. We are all now a part of the living history of St. Augustine's Uni- University. How dare us turn our back on all of the ancestors and the elders before us and not come and clean up that campus? Get that toxic energy, that demonic energy off the university's campus. And then when it's all said and done, we all go and put our hands on that chapel. And we, we, we pledge ourselves back to the university. And we come on home and make this thing work.
Cause, because we do need, we, we need bodies. We need well-abled bodies. And, and none of this takes place without in any funding. And, and I will say that, because we've had to put our own money to deal with.
That's a fact.
Deal with, um, plumbing and leaks and things like that. I mean, we, we've got a three hundred thousand dollar water bill at St. Aug. And the board has asked for donations. And the bill is still there. So the question is, what, what do you do with the money? And so we've had to set up a separate uh, fund that collects money so we can go and pay the water bill, the electric bill, the gas bill, and those things, because those things aren't being paid. Um, I can, I can show you the bills. We, we've got all the documentation. And when we've asked for the Duke Energy Bill and the, which is a gas and electric, that's difficult to pay because Duke, you need a, a code in order to pay the bill. But the other piece of that is that the university, the board is not paying the bill. And I want people that are going to, they want to contribute money to the school. I will give you the water bill and you put on there whatever you want to, to make sure that those things are in place. And Crystal, I'm, I'm pulling up stuff here to put in the chat. And I'm still gonna add all of this in there, but there are things that I haven't put it in yet, because I'm, I'm working off of my phone and my computer at the same time.
Later, because, yeah, I thought when you were over there doing it, but that's okay. We can add it later and people can come back.
Okay, okay. And, and I, and I just say all of that is that there, there are things that need to be done. And, um, I don't know, and this is public information. I don't know if you all are familiar with a, with, well, I know you're familiar with the Cheshire Building. And Joe Cheshire is a descendant of Joe Bishop Cheshire, who is a founding member of St. Augustine's.
Wow.
And Joe Cheshire just resigned off of the board.
Did he? Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
So you see what, uh, somebody typed, Burgess is using the money to pay the board trusted legal bills, I bet. Okay, listen, everybody is definitely entitled to their opinion. I would love it if the board come on, if they would come on. This is an open platform for everybody, like show your face and speak your mind and tell us what we want to know. Uh, that is what it's all about. Like, people just want answers. People just want to hear what's really happening. And I think that's fair. I think that's fair for you. They should have an open forum. They should have been having one on the campus for the people. They should have had one to be able to say, hey, let's, Falcons, we're having a meeting, so we can tell you what's happening with the sale, whatever we trying to do. I mean, that's the right way to do that, to, to really just.
And, and, and you, you're right, and we do have a, a newsletter called Connect the Dots, because a lot of things that were being said out there, but we had done the research and we got, we got correct and right and factual information. Not stuff of, you know, not stuff like, uh, the, the, you know, that they had an audit and they were exonerated from all of the wrongdoing that they were doing. No, that, we, we've got facts and proof and the Saxon report and those things that we put into a document that we send out. So, um, you know, not to, we just wanna, we want our Falcons to have correct and accurate information as they make decisions about their university.
I see the question. I'll let you answer that question, Devon.
Um, are you able to set up an account where we can contribute monthly? Um, we're going back to what Benjamin said a second ago. Um, he's here. Um, I put two of the websites up. I'm about to put SaveSAU's up, um, inside of the chat. As far as Falcons Unite, if you come into Falcons Unite, and if you come to FalconsUnite.com, and if you just come to the bottom where you can sign up or whatever, if you give us your information, we'll make sure that you not only get connected straight into, uh, what Benjamin was sharing about the Connect the Dots newsletter, because we'll connect you over to SaveSAU. But I'm also gonna put SaveSAU's website up in a second. Um, also the Oakwood Falcon Foundation, that is our foundation. That is a foundation that was created, um, literally to help St. Augustine's from the, to top to the bottom. We've been there since two thousand. Um, we had to, we had to figure some things out for the first two or three years. We had COVID and some other things. And we just, we, we, the university was trying to take our foundation. So a lot of people are like, well, y'all, y'all been here for five years. We're like, well, the university tried to take it. So the reason that we didn't put it out there publicly for, for so long, even though we were doing the work, was, um, um, Judge Perry, you know, um, and I'm not gonna say the administrator, but Judge Perry, the, the chairman of the board at the time, he, you know, he said, hey, man, you know, you gotta give us that foundation. After he was the one that actually made the suggestion that we create the foundation. So I don't know what happened, you know, they, they said, hey, go on and create something where you all can help us fiscally, because we were not willing to give the money directly to the university. It wasn't nothing personal. We just didn't like the, the mismanagement that we saw, then has now come to be one hundred percent proven. And we said, look, we'll come and we'll help out any way that we can, but we will bring the money and, and to Benjamin's point, we, we, we will do that. Now Benjamin is, is the go-to guy. He, he has not mentioned the Six Man Foundation, but he's, he's one of the, he is the creator of the Six Man Foundation. Didn't say a word about it. But nevertheless, these are St. Aug entities, and then you have savessau.org, which I'mma put up there in a minute. And the legal piece in particular, we did a lot of the funneling as far as, hey, y'all, here's the lawyers, you know, here they are. If you want to donate, donate here. We gotta pay these lawyers, and you all did it. So you all have been in support of Oakwood Falcon Foundation. You've been in, well, the, the, we got fourteen hundred members in Falcons Unite, but there's a whole bunch of us that, there's a whole bunch of us. I'mma say it like that, and then SaveSAU was growing. Between those three organizations, you literally have a trusted vessel on helping the university as far as your money goes. I want to say this for the record, we understand. Uh, we're wounded Falcons, so everybody's sort of looking at each other like, well, well, Larry, you got five dollars? I got five, but why am I gonna give you five? You know, how do I know you wasn't the one that hit my wing? And all I'm saying is, these organizations are set up for you all. It's beyond transparency. It's not even about the transparency. When we do something, you'll see it. We will put it up there, we will visualize it, and then we'll tell you exactly where your money went. And none of the money that we've ever collected has been enough to do some of the projects that we've wanted to do. So when Benjamin said, we've had to put money in at different times, he wasn't speaking for savessau.org, in my opinion, but it's a fact. All of us have had to come out of our pockets. And we don't care, because we trying to save the school. We're not, we're not worried about, you know, doing what we have to do to save the school, but I do want you all to know that those are trusted vessels. I am the president of Oakwood Falcon Foundation. And before we had a foundation, we were over there on that campus. Y'all know what we were doing? Y'all saw what we were doing. And we, we set up the foundation because the school, the school, James Perry, sir, and board members, you know, and other people said, well, just give us the money. We said, we're not giving you the money. But we'll set up something to give you the money, and James Perry was like, oh, that's great. And when we set the foundation up, they went on a call and told all a bunch of alumni, wow, we have a new foundation. We didn't realize when they said we have a new foundation that they were saying that they, they, that's their foundation, and it led to a whole bunch of conversations. But we're not, we're not concerned with the corruption. You're looking at the good people. The bad people have, have our land withering away. And I went over there right before Benjamin went, and I got turned around, and I didn't mind. I didn't mind.
Are they turning everybody around?
Their excuse is, there's no insurance. They're not gonna say that. Well, did I say that? Oh, pardon me. Allegedly, allegedly, allegedly. There's some things that I can't disclose, but I can tell you this much. They done messed around with that insurance a few times. And, you know, that's out of Burgess's mouth.
So let me say this.
You know?
And, 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 and Crystal, I, I just, Devon has, has hit on very key points, but I, I want to everyone to understand how we got together. In that there were, there were nine of us that were all trying to eat the elephant at different parts. Um, the Falcon Six Man, we were doing athletics, sponsoring the men and women's basketball team, so that they could get tennis shoes and stuff to go to the C I double A. Um, one of the things that came up when the board said, we're going to get out of Saks and we're gonna go to this other entity, Traxx. From an athletic standpoint, we had done some work. Um, and everyone had a different entity. Well, the Traxx is not a entity that is recognized by the N C double A. So once we presented that, and everybody brought a different tool to coming together. But once we got together, we now had a, we, we were like a fist. We, we now had something that we could really hit them with. Um, and so that mushroomed into letters of resolutions, asking them, you know, nicely to go to finally a lawsuit, and then here now where we are, where like Saks is not an enforcement group, but the A G's office, Department of Justice, um, even the, uh, the Industrial Commission, um, you know, they, they went through a, where they had charged St. Aug with fraud. Um, this, this, this charge was actually brought on the eleventh of January against the, the president. Um, because, uh, faculty and staff weren't paid. However, they were given electronic paycheck stubs. But no money was ever transferred into their account. And that, that was one piece of it. Then when the faculty and staff, when they did leave, they tried to get unemployment and the unemployment security insurance had not been paid.
True, it's hard.
It's a lot, it's a lot of stuff, man. It's a lot of.
Yeah, it's a lot of stuff. So I was like, I just want to put those pieces out there. Those things are in place, but we, we do need help. And, you know, anything that you can do, you know, is, is like, you know, picking up the broom, money, whatever, whatever you could do, we won't turn you away. You know, writing documents, anything, anything that you can do, we, we, we need your help. But we, we're, we've been at this a year now, right, Devon?
We've been at it a year for, for.
SaveSAU, right.
Um, Falcon Six Man's been around for, for many years. Um, um, Falcons Unite's been around for fourteen years. And we are one hundred percent valid, and we are one hundred percent real. And for the record, we did a lot, but nobody knew we were doing anything, the same way the Falcon Six Man did the same thing. There are other individuals that are part of SaveSAU that were doing things. Mrs. Bodie was doing things. There was a lot of people doing things. And the thing about it is, uh-huh.
Hold on one minute. I, I'll let you finish, and then I'mma go ahead. Finish your thought.
Go ahead.
No, I was just saying that there was a lot of people doing things. And ultimately, let, let me just say this. Doubt is toxic. And if, if you have any doubt about Falcons Unite, just ask us for our receipts and we'll show them to you. And that's just the best way to go about it. But, but I say that to say this. The main culprits that were spreading the rumors are the main culprits we've been trying to get up out of there. And that's just what it all boils down to. The people who have so much negative things to say sometimes about a Falcons Unite, they know that we are on their heels. And the difference between us and others, there's no political correct if you trying to hurt the legacy. You can't come into the house and light it on fire and don't expect me to act a certain way. I'mma get you out of that house. And then, and that's just what it boils down to. I know this is a beautiful spirited call, but in twenty-five, I am so sick personally of trying to be nice to individuals that are hurting us. I'm just, I just can't, I can't. It's not in my spirit. I am, I am everything that you see. Everything you see on this, on this, this video is everything I am in real life. But if you know anything about me, and if you go back and look at the history that of my time at St. Augustine's, I've done nothing but been a steward of the university, and now I'm a legacy fighter. Where the other legacy fighters at? I'm looking at three other legacy fighters on this call. Two other legacy fighters said they were gonna come on the call. There's hundreds of legacy fighters over at Falcons Unite. There's, I don't know the exact amount of, of individuals that are now coming in to SaveSAU, but the number's growing every day. And, and that's the thing, we can put all of our differences to the side. And let's all come together to help the university. Once we do that, you're not gonna hear from me. I'm gonna go back to being the guy during homecoming who walked around and took everybody's picture, never asked for a penny, because I was documenting our history.
Right. So let me say this, it's, uh, Coach Williams is still trying to job. Uh, if you can hear. Right. So let me say this, it's, uh, Coach Williams is still trying, John. Uh, if you can hear me, John, I just. Sent you his number. See if you can help him, because he tried like four times. Coach Williams has tried four times to get on this call. He's still trying right now.
Can I go and help him really quick?
Yes, this device not connected. Do that for me, please, Dev. I'll drop it down for me. While you do that, so you can do that. Uh, cuz he'd been trying. And, um, so here's the thing. Uh, somebody said it, and I'm gonna put a couple of things in the comments. Somebody said blue and white hearts, and then somebody said, thank you for defending us. And, uh, somebody also said Falcons United is real and a part of the solution. I have to say this. Calvin and I, Calvin McNeil and I, one day. We heard that there was, uh, the pantry was, pantry was low. We got on Facebook Live, we did a live, and I think with the help of Falcons Unite, somehow I think we raised. I don't wanna say the wrong amount, cuz Devron is gone, but I don't know if it was a couple of hundred, a thousand. We raised a lot of money. And when we raised that money, we went and got food. And before you know it, we had, Devron's truck was full. And then we went there, and the lady who runs the pantry was just like so excited, and the student was so excited. So I've seen how they do. I also had another truckload of, of supplies that we sent over there. Cleaning supplies and all kind of things. And they've taken it and made sure the students have it. So whereas there are some people that would want you to believe that they are not. Doing the, the right thing, or that they are underhanded, or that they are sneaky, or that they are not doing what they need to do with the money you donate. Don't believe that. Like he said, ask for the receipts. You know, some people say, they think, I take, I don't, I don't take nobody's side. I'm a Falcon. I have Falcon pride, and I wanna see the school survive, right? I wanna see the school survive. So I only can go by what I have seen or what I have heard. I have seen Falcons Unite. I have seen the, the Six Man Foundation. I have seen SaveSAU. I have seen the Oakwood Foundation. I haven't seen the Board of Trustees. I haven't seen those individuals over there, so I can't. Say anything or defend them, because they won't talk to us. You know, so we give you the opportunity. The same opportunity was given to everybody to get on this call. To show their face and to say things. So if they don't do that, we only can go by what we see and know. You know, that's all we can do. You know, so that's the sad thing about it. You know, uh, we wanted people to come up and share the love, and share the laughter, and share the good memories. So that it would inspire you not to give up. Because, you know, we don't wanna give up. We, we want to still have our school there. You know, we want to still have our school there. Hopefully you were able to get him some assistance. He left out, maybe he's coming back in. You told him to go out and come back in. Cuz it, it keeps saying device not connected. That's what it's saying for him. Device not connected, Dev. So, um. Hopefully you. And that's love, that's love, the man.
If I could email him.
It was some of his Falcon love, y'all. Calvin's sick. That's the only reason he didn't come on campus. But he's in the comments because he also saw what Falcons Unite did. So Larry. I'm glad you're here, because I know that you've said many times, you have a lot of people who have a lot of love for the campus. You know a lot of people. That have a lot of love for St. Agnes, that are rooted and grounded into seeing and wanting the history and the legacy to continue. So I wanted you to hear and see what's happening, so that you can go back to your people and let them know there are some things in place. Where people who want to make things happen can. I mean, there are avenues. If, you know, there are avenues. Despite of what some people want people to believe. So does this call help you to get more information and understanding of what's happening? Cuz I know you're in the West Coast, but sometime you feel disconnected. So I wanna know, did this?
I talk to alumni all, all the time. And, uh, a, a lot, a lot of people, just, a lot of people disgusted, of course. A lot of people saddened by what has happened, but. The majority of us, we wanna continue to fight. You know, fight, board, you know, listen to the A G. Or, you know, get on the same page with the A G. Whatever it takes, whatever we have to do, we need to do it. And, and so Crystal, you know, I've always been a big supporter of what you're doing. I, I praise you for, for all of what you're doing. And, 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 and Devron and Benjamin, I mean, you guys, you guys are fighters, man. You guys are winners. You're gonna win this fight.
We gonna win.
We gonna win. Failure is not an option.
We gonna win. We, we gonna win. It's gonna take time. We just need to put forth the effort and the fight. And, and, but you gotta have that desire to do it. And you have that, gotta have that, you know, you got that fire, man. And so we just gotta, gotta use this, use this social media. You, use this, this media.
He must be on his phone, because it's still saying device not connected. I'm not sure what's happening. A lot of times, um. You know, we're older, you know, we're older, so sometime we don't understand how to use these devices. So I thank you, Devron, for doing that.
Email a link. If you can email him the link, he could click it. You know, open this on your computer, and if he's on a Mac, tell him he probably would have to go into Safari or. You know, one of those other links. But, but Coach is, he, he, he be all over this sometimes.
Williams know how to get it done, for sure. Here and see if that helped him like that. But thank y'all who, who are here. We appreciate you. We just wanted to say, don't give up. You heard what he said. The, the message is, don't give up. The message is, we not out this fight. You know what I'm saying? No matter what you hear, no matter what you see on the news, no what, no matter what somebody. Don't give up like this. I, I don't know how else to say it, except don't give up. You know what I'm saying? Is, is the fight ain't over yet? You know, it's quiet. We don't know what's going on, but we still here. And we gonna stay here. And stay connected with your Falcons, man. Have Falcons, keep your head up, keep your head up. Keep your head up, you know, definitely, because, um. And bless his heart, cuz he just, he didn't try it again. I just sent it to his email.
Y'all leave Coach Williams alone.
He has truly, right. And, uh, we just love him for trying as many times that he did. That gotta tell you something. I'm telling you.
Yeah, he, he, he's trying, he ain't gave up.
Y'all can see how many times he has popped up and know that he is trying to give his input on this right here. That has to mean something.
Can I ask you something? Did his sound come on?
No, it just says a triangle, device not connected.
Device not connected, okay. It's not time for, he probably have to update his browser, but.
Yeah, yeah, no, there was a device not connected. That, that's what it's saying, and that, that's, that's what's happening with him. His device is not connected. So, uh, you know, I was trying to, uh, you, did you call and talk to him?
No, because they would have kicked me out of my, my, one of my systems. So I can't say nothing. Uh, but I was, I was sending the messages.
Cuz I know if you call him, I know he got something to say.
Yep, you can put him right on speaker.
Yes, so listen, I was trying to hang out a little bit, because I know he was trying. I was trying to hang out, you know, I didn't wanna end the call, because I know. He was trying to get up in here. I was trying to give him time to get.
Can you call his phone and put him on speaker?
Uh, let me try that. I tried that one time. Let me try it right now. Yo, give me a second, y'all. I'm trying, I'm trying my best. I don't know if you'll be able to hear me, if I do. Hey, I know you were trying, I know you were trying.
All I had to say, I'm proud of you young folks, carrying on, and I appreciate what you guys are doing. I love you.
We got you on speakerphone, so if you have a message to any Falcon listening, what do you wanna say? It's Larry Phillips on here. It's Larry Phillips. You see? Oh, you can see it.
Love you too, Coach.
We got to save St. Aug, and we got to make sure we save St. Aug. We got to make sure we save St. Aug, you know. I, I was listening to Reverend, uh, was it Walah, uh, uh. Yeah, and, uh, he said that they called the epistles, the quiet, what, the quiet. Power tribe mover, something like that. I forgot the word now. But if you ever go back and look at that, look at that speech of Black History Month. And his speech, he'll tell you about the epistletoff, and he said that's what the Baptists called us. You know, but anyway, we gonna show them how far we are. We gonna make things move, okay?
Yes, sir.
You guys, man, you young folks got to make it happen, man. You know.
Like you, come on now.
Listen to y'all, let's stick with y'all.
You, you be surprised, Coach.
Inspiration, man. We need inspiration.
These are my, three of my very favorite signs. You, and, and you're my daughter. You know that, Kristy, but my daughter, it was since you walked on that campus. And these signs here, and, and man, I love these guys, but I want, uh, to make St. Aug whole again. We cannot let that institution die. We got too many people who've gone on, who put all the energy in. And everything in that university for a, a, a few people to do what they're doing, using our land for their own personal use. We cannot let that happen. We cannot, in the whole world, no, now. We got to make sure we find the right angles. And, and Benjamin, you know. Your organization's a great office. You have so many students, man. You pay so many bills, y'all group. You know, envy. Is always gonna be a part of life. Envy and hate, you don't let that bother you. You keep doing what you're doing. You know, if, you know, if, if they're not in the huddle, they don't know the place, okay? So, so, so let's see them go about their business. But God is in the huddle. God know the place, so you keep doing what you do. Y'all know what y'all doing, man. So don't, don't worry about folk. Don't worry about outsiders. I never worry about outsiders. The street committee always gonna be out there trying to talk about stuff, and they're not in the huddle.
No, they're not. So Coach Williams, I got a question for you, for the people, cuz we talked about good memories, memories, and we talked about the lasting memory. We had being over there. You've been over there, how many years were you over there on that campus? And what is the one lasting memory that sticks out in your mind? Out of all the positions and all the positions.
Forty-nine years.
Out of forty-nine years, what is the one memory that sticks out in your mind out of forty-nine years? You've been in, you've been in multiple positions. You've been the track coach, you've been, what, have you been the registrar?
I've been everything, the registrar. You name it. He had, I've done it because I love what he had done for me.
Love St. Aug.
Yeah, St. Aug is, you know, and it had done for so many people, and everybody I know, we would talk, talk to be. We've all done well at that institution. And I'm so happy that it exists, and I want to keep it existing, because. Now times have changed. It's almost like, you know, it, it's going back, rounding the circle, it's coming back. You know, and, uh, so we, we need to know how to make sure that, uh, we make this thing happen, because, uh. If you don't know the history, you will repeat it, okay?
So Coach, one good, one last thing. What's, what's?
St. Aug, ever since I've been there, from the time I got there as a freshman in nineteen sixty-one. Rode up there from Miami on a bus, and they made me stand up from South Carolina to Raleigh, to give a white lady to my seat. And what St. Aug done for me, had one coat covered from Miami, all those things. But the thing that I remember so, if y'all might remember staying, it was a family institution. Everybody got into, we have our difference, but the family always have difference, but the family always came together. It was a family institution, and it's gonna go back to being a family institution.
And I just wanna say this, y'all, cuz y'all don't know this. And just to show you about how the St. Aug had brought people together, I found this out when I was in Barbados, right? I was in Barbados with my daughter, and we were talking about, um, her, her uncle, right? Her dad's brother. And I, I said, Pup, you know this man, he was the track star out there in, uh, the Bahamas. Come to find out, that was Pup's best friend. My, my daughter's uncle, my ex's brother, was Pup's best friend. And now how small is the world? So when I tell you St. Aug brought people together, you saw what happened with the young lady that said that her, her people were there. St. Aug did that, y'all. St. Aug did that. Pup, any closing remarks that you wanna leave?
And, and I'm gonna tell you something, cuz I went to a, a guy who used to be my roommate, and he's a St. Aug grad, and he passed George Flemings. And Reverend, Reverend Barber spoke at the funeral. And, and I was trying to connect them, because George and I was roommates, you know, and, and, uh. That's before I got married, everything is hanging out again. I was his best man in his wedding. But I didn't know where Reverend Barber, what Reverend Barber had to do with the way he come from. And then he told a story. He said that he wanted to be a pager. And his dad, he asked George Flemings, could Reverend Barber stay with him while he was being a pager? And he said that George Flemings took care of him, fed him, and didn't charge a penny. Because George Flemings and his daddy was college to make this St. Aug. Reverend Barber's dad with the St. Aug.
We never know. But Pup, I thank you so much for calling in. I appreciate you for picking up the phone. And, uh, adding that, you know, we love you, and we definitely wanted you to, uh, be a part of this, so we appreciate you so much. You have.
This is y'all young folks' time. Y'all get to go. There's so many kids I recruited to this St. Aug, there's so many people. I gave advice to, and, and Dr. Davis, and, and Dr. Uh, uh, Dr. Boyer, Dr. Robinson. All those folks gave me some good advice. Round Three, Junior B Delaney, you have said absolutely nothing. And I'm so happy to be a part of this. And, and, and I'm happy for everyone who went through the halls of St. Augustine's University. But it's gonna take us to put St. Augustine University back. Don't depend on other people.
That's right.
Do it ourselves. We, but we cannot do it if we don't know where the money is going. And so nobody wants to put their money in the dark hole, and I, and I believe so. I'm always here, if anybody needs me, you know, the old man is still moving around. Don't worry about me.
Keep it moving, keep it moving.
Okay, we will. All right, bye-bye. Listen, y'all, so I'm gonna let y'all have closing comments. I thank y'all so much for hanging in there. I was trying to. He tried about a good seven times. I was trying to get a minute. Thank you for saying that, to call him, Devron. Thank you for doing that. That's. Great minds, you know, coming together and doing things. Uh, and don't forget tomorrow, twelve noon, Dr. Cambon. Uh, don't forget. Any closing comments? I'll let each one of you, just make an appeal to the Falcons, cuz what'll happen is I'll make clips on this, right? So I'll make a clip on just that. All right, so I'm gonna put you on solo camera, and I just want you to make appeal to the Falcons. You don't have to talk about nothing the board trusts you to do, just an appeal to the Falcons about why they need to keep fighting and, and why we should not give up. Okay, so, uh, I'mma, I'mma start with you, Larry. I appreciate you coming in from the West Coast and being, and doing this. And we gonna do this way. And if you wanna say something to the board, you can say something to them, but I'mma put it on you, okay?
I wanna applaud you for, for all of, of what you've, you've been doing. And, and, you know, how you've connected with everyone. And I'm gonna go out and say.
I don't know, StreamYard is tripping. Okay, start now. You can start now, if you can hear me.
You there, Crystal? Okay, I just wanna applaud you for all the, of what you're, you're doing, and what you're, you've been, uh, it's your calling, sweetheart. It's your calling. And I just wanna say that, uh, St. Augustine's University is gonna be born again, okay? And it's, it's gonna take hard work, but it's gonna happen. It's gonna be born again. And I, I just wanna.
Okay, so something's happening with your, something's happening with your Wi-Fi, something's happening with your Wi-Fi. So I'mma come on over to Devron. Something hap- I wanna make sure it's not streamed, y'all. Let me try you, Devron. Let me see if, uh, let me try this. Give me a second. Benjamin, on you.
He's frozen on my screen.
Give me one.
You talking to Devron?
I gotta get a plug. It might be the fact that I gotta plug in my computer. Give me one second, y'all. It might be the fact that I gotta plug in this computer. It might be tripping. Can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
Can you hear me, Benjamin?
Yeah.
Okay, Larry. I plug it in, so it might be, that might be why I was doing that. Okay, Larry, I'm gonna give you a chance to make your appeal. I apologize. It may be I had to go get that cord. Make your, thank you. I heard you said the theme, but this is to the Falcons. Go ahead.
To all the Falcons. We, we just gotta get, get on the same page. We gotta be strong. We gotta reu- re- re- unite. To all the Falcons. We, we just gotta get, get on the same page. We gotta be strong. We gotta reu, reunite, reunite. We've gotta be strong, stay faithful, prayerful, and I believe in my heart of hearts, that St. Augustine is gonna survive. We gonna survive this, this trauma. And to the board, and to the board, you guys need to step aside, please. Please step aside, move on. So that this university, this great university can survive and, and, and become a reborn university. Please, Lord, help us.
All right, Benjamin, Benjamin.
Okay, is that, that's me? Okay, not Devon. Okay, I'm just trying to make sure. Crystal, I, I do wanna just say thank you. I appreciate everything that you're doing. And as you, you, you get us together and, uh, give us the ability to communicate and share information and share correct and accurate information to other Falcons. And I think that's paramount to, to our overall Falcon cause. And that we need to, uh, all Falcons need to come home. My thing is, Falcons, you need to come back to the nest and put yourself in a situation that you wanna be able to save this university, and anything that you suggest or that you wanna do, we can do. And we are more than willing to do that because we can't do it all, but we, we are in the fight for the long term. And we, failure is not an option. And we have taken this to a point of, we, we're gonna finish this. We, we've got this to the point now. We're gonna finish this. We're gonna win, and then we gotta restructure, rebuild, and be a renaissance to get back, get St. Aug back in its rightful place.
Wow, thank you. Devon?
Yeah, um, all Falcons come home. All Falcons come home, all Falcons come home. You know, thank you, Ms. Bodie, for giving us the opportunity to be here. Thank you for being the first to actually get the original founding members of Falcons unite on a call. Um, for, for all of the Falcons that are out there, none of us technically have the answer. All of us working together will be the answer. And I mean that literally. You know, um, Benjamin sometimes says, you know, if, if, if you're in the play and you make a mistake while you hustle, the coach is still gonna say, you know what, good play. You know, you were doing what you needed to do to try to help us win the game. A lot of Falcons right now sometimes have a sense of guilt. And they just feel like, well, you know, I haven't been involved this long, or I don't know what to give, and I don't know what to do. Every single human that passed through the gates of thirteen fifteen, tap into that ancestral energy, and please understand that it's spiritual grounds. It's not just a college campus. It, it's, it's all of the historical elements. It's all, um, of the individuals that with their bare hands. They, they, they built this, the university. And with all the technology and all that we have right now, there's no reason for us all just not to come home. If we're busy, we don't have time to look to the left or the right to be petty. We're busy. And all I'm saying to you all is, all Falcons come home. We're not out of this. And I'mma give y'all something to think about. They lit the university on fire. They lit our home on fire about six years ago. And they ain't burnt nothing down yet. They've hurt the school. The students are no longer there. A lot of good faculty and staff are no longer there. A lot of incredible administrators are no longer there. A lot of incredible people who held that university down are suffering, but it can't be in vain. And I'm just asking everybody, you don't have to connect with me. Connect with Crystal. Connect with Larry. Connect with Benjamin. Everybody can play a part. And that's seriously what, what I want, want to empower and encourage. Please, come play your part. And I'mma shut up on this note, but my father said something to me, God bless the spirit. One day I said to him, I said, I said, Pops, how do you do all the things that you do? Cuz I used to just watch him, and he could do so much. And he said, well, well, son, I'm only doing my part where I'm effective. Sometimes I get in, I might try some other things, but I'm doing my part, and if everybody does their part, we will get it done. That is one thousand percent how I see this thing with St. Aug. That's one thousand percent. We do not have any other purpose realistically right now, but to save the university. And I wanna say this, if they would've been able to do what they initially tried to do, St. Aug would've been shut down in two thousand twenty-four.
Wow.
Yeah. Because everything is starting to come out. But they haven't succeeded. They're not going to succeed. And if more of you all come home and more of you all get informed and educated, more of us can get more done, and we can make this thing happen. That's it.
Thank you so much. I, I thank you so much, Devon, for that. I appreciate y'all. Thank y'all for being here. I think we got like one minute to go. We out. Listen, Falcon pride, y'all. Let's not stop fighting. Keep going, keep going, keep going. Love the campus. Get with somebody who's doing something. Let's all do our part. This was my part. This was my part. We not playing favorites. Falcon pride, all right? Blue and white. I see the blue and white. I see the flag, Larry, all the way from the West Coast. Come on, come on, come on, come on. All right, you see, I got it on. I got my shirt on. I got my shirt on. The college.
It was too hot. And then I, I just, I didn't get a chance. You better stop. You better stop. We got a whole bunch of these. You know, we about to put these out there. You got the official staff backs, you know. Come on now, a donation.
Love y'all. See you next time. Tomorrow at twelve o'clock, y'all. Tomorrow at twelve o'clock, all right? I'll see you later. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Crystal. Appreciate you. Bless me.
Holler at me, holler at me.
Thank you.
All right, for everybody listening, check.